I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for August 15th, 2023 at 5:34 PM. Tenants roll call.
Other person Wolf is absent. Other person's Terrence.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Kapusta.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kabaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole from July 27th, 2023? Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business. 2024 capital projects fund budgets. Public works and development divisions. To start. Scott?
So where's the public works here?
And Tammy.
Hi. And Timmy.
And Tim. Barb?
So many numbers on it today.
Scott, give me a second. Okay. Both of them are on. You've got number two.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So what we're going to do is we have a schedule and an agenda. And we're going to start with special revenue for parks. Couple things to start with.
Just make it easier. Can you, are you, what page are you starting on?
Oh, sorry. I am absolutely sorry. Very last page. Park dedication, special revenue program.
Page 74.
All right, everyone there? So just a couple things. I do not expect that you guys approve everything. I totally do not. We kind of put some wish lists in there from different groups. We know that you're going to have some discussion. Some things are going to pass and some things aren't. But again, I am well aware that we aren't going to pass everything. Also too, I want to give you just, I had Tammy run some numbers today, just to kind of see how, besides roads, the second most kind of like questions we get is, or requests are regarding parks, boat launches, trails, playgrounds, just to kind of give everyone an idea. So far this year, our rec programs, the ones that Tammy and Adam Young, we brought in $300,000 and $2,000,000. Our boat launches brought in $24,500,000. Our boat passes season brought in $19,000. Our idle aisle pay station brought in $21,250,000. Our idle aisle concession and kayak rack rentals bring out in $13,000. Park Arthur Fields Turf Only has brought in $53,000 and we have another $6,000 out there for invoicing. And we have tournaments all September, October. And our park rentals, which is all other fields and pavilions, brought in $15,700. Just, I just want to kind of give you guys an idea of what we do in one year. I haven't done that before, so I just wanted to kind of let everyone know. So, let's look at 2024. And we can go down, or you guys can start picking out things and telling me what looks good. And I threw a variety of stuff in there from boat launches to other things like trails, to some things that we need to do. I can go for the first thing for all fields in 2024. Nothing of that is mostly maintenance and that's all our baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields, any of that stuff. It's not a major project. This is just our regular maintenance. And I'm willing to have any questions about that first group.
Scott, where are we on the laundry pair for Big Lake from this year?
Well, actually, let's get to, let's start with just the baseball part and we'll get to that.
Yeah, it's on there. Don't worry. It's coming.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
A quick question on the field revenue. Is that kind of what we expected from the turf fields? Are we above schedule, on schedule?
I would say we're above.
Okay.
We're ahead.
Cool. Cool.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
And just to let you know, we have not advertised at all for anything.
You don't need to.
Yeah, I don't think we need to. So, and this is also too with no tournaments in August. And we are already gaining calls for next year to have tournaments in August, which is good. So. So, any other questions about the fields stuff?
Thoughts on the, any objections right now? Because the field stuff right now is essentially maintenance, capital stuff. Any objections to anything?
I think that's all.
And we're only looking at the 2024 right now? We're not commenting?
Correct. Okay, got it.
I mean, if there's something, although if there is something down the line that you have a big red flag, I mean, there's.
I know. I don't want to waste time talking about the $2.9 million development in 2028. So.
Yeah, more of that is just, it's a note to let you know, we have it in the schedule. We keep moving it down. But I don't want you to be surprised. You guys never told us about this. You never could. But again, it's just a footnote for what it is.
Well, with what we spent to get those fields to where they are, I think what's, I think that's reasonable for 2024.
Yeah, we have to maintain them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to move down to park tennis courts, pickleball court, basketball courts. What we do have, the three that are there, Freedom Square, though there's two tennis courts out there, they're done. We are pretty much beyond repair. That's $130,000 to replace both those tennis courts. Lee Hupka Basketball Court looks really nice. We just need a new fence there. That's $50,000. And Lions Park, not the main courts, but the two without the fence, that needs an overhaul, a replacement of $35,000. Just to let everyone know.
I'd like to talk about Schmidt Park and Freedom Square.
Sounds good. And Schmidt is the 2025 one, just to let you know. That is the neighborhood park. And there's two tennis courts there, and that's $130,000 as well.
Neither Schmidt Park or Freedom Square has any parking. The neighbors are already objecting around Freedom Square about any parking that's there in the first place. Schmidt Park, as you mentioned, is a neighborhood park. There's just no parking. If we put in courts there, the people are going to have headaches over there. So I think for the 2025 Schmidt, I'd like to see us scratch that and just do remedial repairs or whatever we can to, to what's out there. To put that kind of money into a pickleball court where there's no parking to me is a waste of money. Freedom Square, same situation. There's no parking there.
Isn't, are we, isn't there like 12 spots there? I'm confused.
Well, that's where the old.
Freedom has about 12. They have, they have, but like, if you would put like, let's say you change that to pickleball, you will not have enough spots. I'm just letting you know.
Yeah.
Is that the plan?
Sorry, I was being like semantics. There is parking, just not a lot of parking.
Right now it's just to replace it to tennis court.
Okay, got it. You said, no, I'm like, is it wrong parked?
The idea is this, it's just to replace it to, the price of two tennis courts.
Is the, is there a plan to change that to pickleball down the road? Okay, because I do see.
No.
Okay. Because I do see kids out there playing basketball occasionally, you know, on a daily basis. When I drive by there, there's usually somebody out there playing basketball. They're probably coming from the apartments across the street or the neighborhood. So I do know it's used. But I don't know how many people actually drive there to use it, to be honest with you. Most of the time I see kids driving.
Yeah, I don't see it as a destination either. But, but in any case, I, I, I really have a problem with putting $130,000 into that. As a matter of fact, something that we talked about over the last number of years is I think we should consider selling that parcel. It's got access to Jamesville Road. It's a small parcel. It's underused. I'd like to consider selling that parcel, using the money from Schmidt Park and from Freedom Square to build a better facility at Moreland Park, where there's going to be a pavilion.
So, I don't necessarily object, I don't object to what you're talking about on that. It is a shift in philosophies that I think we ought to consider of how we're going to allocate some of our capital funds going forward. Do we want to invest into very small regional or community, actually neighborhood parks, which ebb and flow with the age of the neighborhood. How often are you, Schmidt Park, that, that whole area? Brian lives in that area. I mean, 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, the age of that subdivision was dramatically older than it is now. So now, you know, there may be use going on on it, but it's also going to, it just ebbs and flows with the neighborhood. It's not, you're sticking money into an area that can only be used by one part of the community, yet the whole community is paying for it. Or do we want to stick money into larger regional parks like Moreland where they can be destinations for everyone? We can offer better facilities like pickleball, maybe a splash pad at Fets or something like that, where we're sticking money into bigger amenities that more of the community could have access to, but not as readily accessible as something in someone's backyard. So it's.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, you know, like I said, I see people use it. How much that park is used, I have no idea if that can be used. You know, $130,000 does seem like a lot.
I think the park, I mean, it's still nice to have a nice green space there. I mean, I could, there, we don't, where I live, there is not a neighborhood park besides what our subdivision owns, but that's privately, well, yeah, there's a private park that's, but there's nothing that the city owns that we can, my kids could have ever walked to and everything. So it's a nice amenity to having just the open green space there. It's just a matter of, do you want to stick that kind of money into it? I do also want to say that Alderman Wolf will want to weigh in on this. So whatever we discuss tonight, it's going to come back. So, and I told him he would have the opportunity to do that because he knew he wouldn't be here tonight. So.
You sure he's going to want to comment?
Kevin, I do agree. You, you make a good comment about that and, you know, I'm, don't object to that as a thought process, but yeah.
So if we could hold those two expenses kind of in abeyance until we get some input from Rob, that would be, that would be good, something to think about?
What's the thought, I mean, what's the thought right now on Freedom Square at least? I mean, which, which two of you have that?
He had it. No, I haven't.
Okay.
Oh, is it yours technically now? Is it split? It is, because we have the weird dividing one. Yeah, I think it's mine.
Well, you two work that out. What are your combined thoughts?
I've seen dogs in there as much as I've seen people in there. Because it's fenced in, people take their dogs.
It's not in good shape. It's not in good condition.
It need, it's at the point right now where there's this, you know, $130,000 is a sizable investment.
Right.
To a relatively, yes, there may be, you know, a group of 10 kids that go play basketball there, but that's a sizable amount of money for 10, 10, 15 kids that use it.
How far away is Bay Lane from there? Or it's, we don't even.
Depends how old the kid is that's going over there and his parent. Yeah. It's, it's a lifetime away if your child's, you know, 10 or under and it's.
I don't, we let my kids do that. And then you have Manchester Hill right up the hill.
That's probably a more applicable discussion.
Yeah. So, but there's no basketball courts there. So I don't. Kind of seems like it is a duplication for $130,000 with those two parks, you know, 10-year-old, 12-year-olds to get on a bike and ride.
I mean, and the other thing that we haven't gotten to, but we will tonight, is, you know, we need to free up some money in our capital. And yeah, at some point, we need to have a serious discussion on roads. Because the way we're doing it right now is not.
I think that $130,000 for Freedom Square would be spent better else, better off elsewhere.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I've never seen anyone playing tennis or anything there.
I can't say I've ever seen tennis, but I see basketball.
Basketball, I see. The tennis nets are usually down. So.
All right. So right now we'll just tag those.
Moving on, are you okay with Lee Hupka Basketball Court Fence?
Sure.
Okay. Are you okay with the pickleball court for Lions Park?
Well-used, well-used, yeah.
Yeah.
Moving down, dog park yearly maintenance. I have to put it in there for the maintenance. By the way, that has been very well-used. If anyone has taken their dog over there.
How has cleanup been?
We clean it up every day, but we have to.
No one, they're not picking up after themselves?
No.
No.
It's just an everyday maintenance thing, but they are doing, they're policing themselves.
Okay.
It's just if you don't stand tall of it, it gets out of control.
Okay.
Which means we empty the garbage bags on a daily basis. So. Moving down, one of the other ones, Veterans and Old Town Hall new LED light poles. It's our last one that we need to get new LED light poles is at Veterans Park. That's our estimated cost for full replacement at Veterans and Old Town Hall, correct? So.
That's a security thing as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yep.
There's a slight ROI on it, according to LED versus what we have in there now. I'm assuming they're more efficient. Longer life too.
Moving down, playground sets. Just basic maintenance or miscellaneous replacement of playground equipment, $10,000 and their wood chips for all. Playground's $10,000. Any concerns with that?
Hmm, no.
Okay, moving down, boat ramps and dredging. And this is where, it's a good one. So idle aisle concrete boat ramps, $150,000. Moving down box horn dredging, it's about $115,000. And then in 2025, we got a request for Lake Denoon boat launch, the 150, and I believe that would include the dredging. And we're trying to do new piers, I think, with that as well. So these are, these are new items. These are items that I feel that you guys have given us, gotten a lot of requests for. And I'm happy to open it up for discussion because Alderman Kapusta even brought it up and Alderman Hamel has brought it up several times. So please let me know your thoughts.
Yeah, box, box horn, something needs to be done with that. Yeah, when it's not usable, it's, yeah, that's. So as of this year, we haven't done anything to them.
We pull the bogs out when we can.
Right.
But dredging wise, we, we only can do minor stuff at the shore, but we can't do anymore. We can't do anymore with our equipment.
So this would give us full operation then?
This would bring barges in and people with the equipment that we don't have in order to do this work.
How long do you think we need to do this? Because it, you know, it's going to keep on filling in, I'm assuming, down the road.
I would assume as our winds come from west to east, it tends to kind of fill in the material. I was hoping that this would last, what, 15 years?
Yeah, I wouldn't think it'd be as bad as Little Muskego. I mean, Little Muskego, you have the water bugs who do take the same path every day. You have wake boats out there. You don't have a wake boat on Big Muskego.
You don't have people power loading.
Right. So when we set those pads in there, it's probably 2007, 2008. And when we did that, we reached out as far as we could go. I think just after time with the silt and ice shifting and every year we have that push-up, it's just filled in. I think when we start from scratch now, it'll be enough to where I can reach out to the end of the pier and do that maintenance that we've been doing. And I see us getting as long, if not more, with this route. It's never been dredged out. It was more of a, keep it serviceable for your little fishing boats. And if you wanted to put in something bigger, you could use Hunter's Nest or when Durham used to be opened.
So what's the, isn't the issue more further past even that?
It is. So it, it kind of just mellowed out. At first you could launch, you'd go down, we have the track pads. And then you would fall off and you could launch. Now with everything being pushed in and even when we pull the bogs in and we reach them, when we're pulling them, we're pulling that silt with us. So after time, it just kind of slowly filled in and filled in. And with this year, with the lake being at least that damn level, if not lower, for a long time, it's, it's impossible.
So how far out do you think we're going to be dredging?
Estimated, I think we did about 150 feet out, fully dredged. And then I want to say from pier, about the same, 175 to 100 both ways. So it'll eliminate that bog rolling in from the west wind. And if it does, at least we can grab it. But it'll give us, I mean, you're looking at all of 10 years.
Okay.
Unless somebody starts skiing out there, I think we'll be all right.
Are there any grants available for this?
So Tom looked at a couple grants and in order to do the grants, you, it's not just dredging alone. You have to kind of do like, are you going to approve the asphalt? Are you going to approve the piers? It's more of a bigger project, not just the dredging alone. So that's what Tom looked at. Again, we got one cost. When we do this, we can get multiple costs. I know Tom is talking to another person to kind of look at it. We're trying to do apples that apples, give us a cost for the same amount of dredging. So we can see, we just had to give you a number to kind of talk about it. So. And we kind of did a big area because we don't want to go back out there for a while. So.
My, one of my concerns on this is spending this kind of money and then having it fill in in five years. I, we can't be like spending this kind of money every five years. So if, if because of shifting environments or whatever, this starts happening, we're going to have to have a larger discussion of if we maintain a launch there. So, just giving you a heads up.
Well, I agree. Scott, how long will that project take?
I, I don't see it taking more than a couple of weeks. I mean, it's, I've seen the guy that has been out there, he was in Bassett's Bay doing some stuff. It's just, all just moving material.
Is this winter work or?
Yeah, it can be. We prefer not to be because of, you know, you think about open holes at night, people blowing out ice fishing, not knowing it's there. It'd have to be secured pretty good. Even when we have ice heaves there, we'll throw out barricades because sometimes the ice heave pushes it and guys go out there with their four-wheelers and don't see it.
Sure.
But it's kind of going to be a coordination thing. Also with duck hunting. We do have access around the lake. So if we had to completely shut it down, you know, we could do that.
Okay.
On the idle aisle launch, now that's a concrete launch now. Is this a repair or an expansion or?
We, what you see from the shoreline to the edge of the water is concrete. Once you get in there, it's the, the cable together concrete pads like we have down at Big Muskego. And what's happened there from people power loading, everything underneath those pads have undermined, they've snapped. And when, you can kind of watch, but when you see somebody pulling there and they get off to the side, there are bolts like this, one way or the other.
Okay.
The trailer goes in crooked.
Right. Right. So this would be, this would be them putting peering in, us coordinating that with our drawdown. And then going out with permanent concrete so that after, like, you know, from, I'm not just going to pick on the water bugs, but from them constantly doing circles and other people coming in, we can get in there and maintain it and clean it and that concrete's solid. It's not moving.
Gotcha. Okay.
What did we just do out there?
New piers. And, and we cleaned, and we cleaned up a lot of, didn't we clean up some of the bad?
New piers shoreline from the kayak launch to there. We put in the law enforcement area, so they have their own separate pier. And then we poured concrete so that our piers never move. So when we put them in every year, that's, they're just right there.
And we, don't we have some, two new cleaning?
There's two new washout stations and then our shower finally showed up for the season. So.
Yep. Okay. And then if you're looking at like Lake Denoon boat launch and Ben down there, you know, we, we were looking at a couple besides dredging, maybe changing the, the angle. There's a turnaround there. It's, it's very difficult to kind of get all the bolts in. It would be really re-examining everything and kind of making it a really lot easier to access and to unload your boat and pull your boat out. So. And you're very familiar with that area as well.
It's, it's a mess.
Yes.
It's a mess.
So. So I guess I'm hearing from you guys, you're okay with idle aisle concrete boat ramps and the box horn dredging?
Yep.
Okay. Next one, future trails, Martin Drive, Landon Drive to Oak Hill Trail.
Scratch that for both years, for, for that little segment, $751,000 plus $83,000 for engineering, when Kirkland Crossing is not going to be developed at this time. Take that completely out of the capital budget that.
You can push it back. I was the one who asked for it. And there's still an issue when we talk about Freedom Square, right? We're pulling out a park to connect these areas to those other parks. So if you wanted to get to Park Arthur now, kids in that area have to ride or walk down areas where there's no trail. That's how this has come up. So.
That area just isn't conducive to a trail. It's, it's a small segment and the kind of money that would cost to, to do that is just, it's just crazy.
I mean, the, the thought was to pair it at some point with road repair when that happens. I know that we don't know what, we can keep pushing it back. I don't know where that falls. I don't get complaints on that road, so I'm assuming that that's not on the radar. But it, but there's, we've had calls for that end down line and one or the other, like to connect it to the kind of Jamesville section where there's, and the sort of discussion, that path was cheaper than the Landon one, right? When we talked, I think was sort of the, to go Landon for Martin.
When we started doing these studies, and I think it was the first year with the Landon, it, even the cost estimate, it was again, very high. And again, as you do the trade-off of what is the cost for road repair and what is it a cost for a trail, the best time to do a trail is when you're doing a real reconstruction. Even the first time, just the history of this, this, this trail that you have on there was done by predecessor so many years ago. And it started the process and then it ended really quick. I, I don't know the history of more than it just ended. I don't know if, it sounded like the neighbors came out and it was great. And then the neighbor's like, no, I don't want you to take my trees down. And if you see it, there's a lot of things on that north side of the road. The other thing too, when some of the people brought up, brought up about Kirkland Crossing, right now that project is on hold. There is, there's no movement.
And that's all we know on that, right? Because I'm, I think I get more calls on that than anything.
It's just on hold. You know.
Part of it's for sale.
Part of it's for sale. That's another thing too. So.
Because I mean, they don't have to tell us if they just like tank the deal, right? I mean, it's not necessarily in our, if they're just like, we're done, they walk away.
We, we have no, we have no developers agreement with them yet, nothing like that. They have stopped their engineering plans from where they are. And there has been, you know, no communication between us and the developer.
Sorry. It's not a budget talk, but that's relevant.
Yeah. It is kind of with the Martin Trail, why it was brought up, that people were asking for it. So.
So again, my recommendation is to scratch that in 2024 and in 2025.
Any objection?
No, I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that.
And then our last one in 2024 was the Moreland Park Pavilion with bathrooms, water and sewer hookup. It's becoming one of our more busier parks with the soccer field, the dog park, the skate park there, the playground. So that was our last request that we had. Thoughts?
This is going to take a little while, so bear with me. My suggestion would be to move that to 2025 and let me explain why. If, if we look at the 2024 capital budget, the majority of calls that I get are either neighbor-to-neighbor complaints or, or roads. And I think that we've got to take a serious look at our road situation and see what we have out there. So with that, Scott includes in the operation side of the budget, and we're talking capital, they have it on the operation side of the budget, 750 a year. I think this year he's got a million dollars for our road project for this year. If we take a look at some of the items in our capital budget for 2024, including getting rid of the flag pole that flies a flag for, what, a?
Space Force.
Space Force. I, I don't think we really need a $50,000 flag pole for, for the Space Force. That may or may not exist with another administration. Nor do we need the $83,500 for the Martin Road project. And also in, in Brittany, I'm not taking potshots at the library, but I'm looking for a little hanging fruit. There's a library restroom project that's on the capital budget for $181,400 and some odd dollars. That restroom in my estimation is functional. It's ADA compliant and needs painting and some decorative wall covering to bring it up to, up to speed. At a cost of maybe less than $10,000. So if we tally up those three particular items, I come up with $310,000. If we move the Moreland Pavilion to next year's budget, that gives us a little over $500,000, which can be put back into our road project for 2024. If we move the Moreland Pavilion to next year's budget, that gives us a little over $500,000, which can be put back into our road project for 2024. So instead of a million, we'll have a million five in there. If we turn to 2025 and take out Martin Drive for 751.5, and again, Brittany, excuse me, but library electric sign for $50,000 is a nice thing to have. But I think our roads need more, uh, more, uh, more than, than that particular sign. So if we add those two together, we've got 800,000, less the 250 for the pavilion, another 550,000, $500 of which could put, put into the, into the road project for 2025. So instead of 750, we had 1.25 million. So by making a couple of these shifts, we can put another million dollars into our road fund for 2024 and 2025. And then in addition, if we consider what's happening over at Freedom Square and Schmidt Park, by moving that pavilion to Moreland Park and putting those pickleball courts in there, we've now created a complex in an area instead of in a neighborhood park where parking is a problem. Uh, so, so again, for 2024, I'd like, like to see the flag pole go, the Martin Drive, uh, pre-planning go. Uh, the library restroom, restroom, as well as the pavilion moving to 2025. And in 2025, the library's, uh, sign gets taken off, Martin Drive gets taken off and the pavilion gets added in. And again, it gives us a million dollars over two years in our existing road projects. Food for thought.
That's a lot of jumping around. It's good though.
Excuse me?
You just like jumped into other.
Yes.
So before, before, and before, I mean, you can comment on it theoretically, but I also want to give Brittany, I know her time is, before you completely pull it out, I think we ought to listen to at least.
I understand.
What her rationale, she's not bringing stuff forward just for the sake of bringing it forward, I hope. Uh, so, um, so just kind of keep that in context, you know? Not saying your suggestion is bad, but I don't want to, they put them there for a reason, so. Um. At a higher level, what's, any thoughts on any of that as far as what he had said?
I think the road program is, um, a good place to start. I don't, I like how you've sort of gone specific, but if we're going to commit to it, I would say pick and, um, add that money in and we cut where we have to cut. Doesn't necessarily have to be those, it can be. But if we're saying, hey, we want the road program to be doubled for next year, then I think we start there and then we work out instead of trying to work backwards. I mean, it, I appreciate that you've put that time in, but maybe we find that something the PD puts forward, we're not going to do, and we want to do the bathrooms, right? I, he's smiling over there.
And they're, and they're earned.
And it could be, so I, I mean, I, if we think that's a priority, then I maybe commit to that and we cut the things that we have to cut to get there, so.
Sharon or Jenny, I got a quick question and just kind of popped to my head on this. So a lot of the, um, in fact, everything is for, that we're talking about tonight, park dedication slash landfill. Is there anything that from those funds that we have to use them just for parks? So if we're pulling stuff out of parks, we can't use them for the road program or can we use, is this strictly landfill discretionary landfill? Can, microphone?
We do have sufficient funds available for the parks. I mean, we are required to spend 10% park dedication, 10% for conservation, but other than that, we can utilize it how the council sees fit.
So if we go the route that Alderman and Kabaki's talking about pulling back these, we're not going to run into a funding source problem because it has to be used for a cer, for one thing that we're not used there. Okay. That's all I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yeah, so the, the line I guess is park dedication, conservation and stormwater and then anything else after that.
Okay, thank you. So Alderman Terrance actually, I mean, his suggestion might be a cleaner way of us walking through this instead of making a decision. So, you know, when we, and we're.
These are merely suggestions.
Yes, no, I get that.
I, I like that suggestion, but there may be more to add.
Do is when we, right now we're into parks part, so you've pulled out some of the things you want that you don't think are necessary. What, is this under engineering, when do roads come on, engineering division?
No, roads are an operation budget. Remember, that's why we keep them there.
Uh, capital, where would we add it? You have, right now you have capital, you have.
I have a capital in there for engineering, it's in the road program.
2026, right?
Yep.
So we would be adding it in there. So when we talk about engineering, you can make the discussion of, okay, we want to spend $500,000 on our roads. So add it there. And then as we go through this whole process, we'll be subtracting stuff out, maybe it'll balance, maybe it won't. If it doesn't, we need more out, our options are either cut further or borrow. But we can decide it at the end, but at least we're taking it topic by topic that way. Okay?
I agree.
Yep.
All right, so you can continue.
Okay, so besides that, I think we went through all 2024. Is there any items that again, you would like to see shifted or anything like that? I mean, again, we do five years out. Um, I, I'm giving you fair warning here, in 2025, there's Park Arthur Field Four. We need to do that project in that year. There is a donation tied to that. The, the donor is expecting that we get that project done. So it's their balance of 400,000, our contribution of 400,000. So I'm letting you know that is pretty solid that you cannot move that out there. But as we move other things into 2025, is there some items that you would like to get moved, maybe move 2025 further down? For example, Sand Hill Permanent Bathrooms, I will throw one out there. You could move that from 2025 to 2027 and we'd be fine with that. Just to kind of space things out a little bit. Anyone see any other questions or concerns?
Nothing.
If, if not, I'm going to move on to the next area.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, can we do one second? Can we just, we're going to put Cowan hold for a second. We'll start council. We have some guests here from Fleet Farm that want to introduce themselves. We'll do the mayor, communications to the mayor's office and then.
Sure.
Jump back if everyone's okay with that. Do we need to? So I can just put it in adjournment. Okay. So, so I'm going to put the committee of hole in recess right now. So we're in recess from the committee of hole. All right, continuing. Thanks for indulging us.
Okay, uh, are we done with parks though? I just want to make sure any more comments before.
Yep.
Does everyone understand the point you brought up about the, uh, large baseball field at Park Arthur that we really kind of need to keep that there next year or we're forfeiting a sizable.
Do we have, Timmy, are there stipulations around what they want in there?
Um, there will, they'll probably want some naming rights.
I'm just saying as far as like what goes in, like the type of field.
It's going to be a turf field, similar. Um, we don't, right now we're looking, um, mainly just the infield, I believe would be turf, the outside would be regular grass outfield.
Yeah, and the current, the three fields, we have the wings that go all the way down. This will be the infield arc extended to the fence.
Okay.
So it's still be that warmup area, but to do those wings all the way down, it's almost.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a.
Close to the same square footage as the infield, so I took that out.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Moving on.
Um, yeah, we're going to do water utility and sewer. One side note, this is just a safety thing. At the Fleet Farm right now, there is temporary signals up that are flashing red.
Yep.
Everyone be aware, this is a side note.
I would say every time I go there, at least two cars completely blow through them, so be careful.
Is that going to be a traffic light there or another roundabout or?
It will, well, for, it'll be a traffic light there until the county decides for a permanent solution.
Yeah, but just, I want to, it's, it, they're out, they're flashing red right now. It's a safety thing just to let everyone know. All right.
What page?
What?
What page are we on?
We're moving to water utility. I will find the page for you.
59?
Let's go with 59 meters.
Right here, 59.
Before we get started with water utilities, as you can see, Scott has retired in March. Um, his replacement is Tim.
Did he get younger?
Um, so this is Tim Burdell. Um, again, a lot of you do know who Tim is. He's been here, what, 20 plus years?
30 years in January.
30 years in January, so just to let you know. Um, but just to kind of put a, a face to the name, so. Um, we are starting on page 59, um, meters. So again, we have this spaced out. This is the same that we've always asked, the number of water meters, um, going up to new construction and the increase of the water meter replacements that are necessary, so.
Good.
Any comments, concerns?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on, um, this is our water utility, um, division for our trucks. Remember, we split the trucks, um, between 50% water, 50% the sewer utility. Um, again, uh, last year, I believe we pulled, uh, the truck, was it both for water and sewer because of the back truck? Is that correct?
Uh, we moved the crane truck back a year, which we did again this year in 25, so.
So we're just back to the other one, but we keep moving it back as we need it, but it's on the schedule.
Questions? Concerns? Go on.
Okay. Um, next, this are, are well rehabs. Right now, we've been doing a really good job. Um, these are our last two wells that we need to rehab. Um, well nine would be a rehab and well eight in 2025, it would be the plan to abandon it, so.
Which one, where is well eight?
Oh, so well eight's over by Briargate. It's a well we took over, it's very minimal, it's like 200 gallons a minute. It doesn't put out much. It's still working right now, but if we have issues with it, it's time to probably abandon it. It doesn't put out, I mean, we hardly run it. We have eight active wells and that's one that just doesn't run hardly at all. I mean, we, we could turn it on and let it run all summer and it just doesn't produce a lot of water. Um, it's good for backup if we need it. So it's running before we have to stick a lot of money into it. I think it's time to probably just abandon it.
Any current concerns with the well rehabs? Why we don't have anything else out, because if you remember the last couple of years, we've kind of hit the other wells that we, we needed to do, so.
Okay, continuing.
Um, moving on, um, asphalt, concrete and storm sewer work just in front of the Mercury Building right there. Um, there is some work that we just need to do on our, for our building, um, with the amount of trucks that come in there. Um, again, we, the total cost is 90,000, 45,000 goes to public works, 22,500 goes to water and 22,500 goes to sewer, so.
Continuing.
Okay, um.
No one speaks up, we're just going to kind of go through.
The next couple, um, again, nothing for 2024. I would like you to look at page 64 there about our paint the water towers. Again, we are monitoring this. Um, we have people look at the inspection of our water towers all the time. Why I want to let you know is it's a big cost. Um, again, it's coming. We've been on the capital, we pushed them back, um, but we do monitor it and have people look at these both each year, so.
Didn't we just paint a water tower?
We just painted that one over there.
Okay.
But there, there's the other two. There's one on Hill and Hill and there's one right by Gingerbread House. These are the ones that we're talking about. And then 65 is that water relay water laterals. Um, that was in Weatherwood Court. Alderman Madden asked that to move up in 2025. Just let you know, it's coming up. And then we have a Hill and Hill booster station that we keep kind of moving down the way, um, just for future design, but that's it, so.
Could we go back to the relay water main relays?
Which ones? The page 65? 63, 63, okay.
I know it's a future item, but just, just to note, i- is that our net cost or is that the gross cost of doing this?
That would be everything from our last time we did the estimate about a couple of years ago. It's probably not up to date, so I'm guessing that's going to be higher. Right now in these three areas, why we put this in there is we were having water main breaks on a like yearly basis. And we thought that this was going to really be coming and we wanted to let you know now.
Now, in your notes though, you say that this would likely be assessed to the adjacent property owners. My question is, is this our, our cost or?
Well, this was at the time when we were, but since we just passed some new water main rules, it's no longer being assessed.
Okay.
I, I just want to let you know, this was written before we did that policy.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted clarification, thank you.
Yep.
Scott, I, I got a quick question for you.
Um.
Water trust, is there any cost coming up with that anytime soon or because I know, didn't we talk about that, about, um, some of those failing and, or that was, refresh my memory on that if you.
So the water trust have to reach out to us and request for us to be on it. If they don't reach out, there's no cost. You know, nothing to us. It's, it's up to them to reach out to us.
And if anything happens, that is their burden to bear?
Well, correct, right now.
Okay.
Like, so if they're in the water trust and let's say they have a water main break, they hire a contractor, they fix it themselves. It's, everything's on them, so.
Part of that, so if their system completely fails and they have to connect, that's part of why we did the water policy last fall of, they have to, it'll be borne on those homeowners that are part of the trust to connect it, the cost of connecting into our system. So there could be a scenario, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, where they can't fix their system. It's either a bad well or it can't be fixed and they have to, they have to hook up. We have to allow them to, but because we have that policy now, we can, they can, they're responsible for it. Otherwise there is gray area of how we were going to work that, so.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Any other questions about water? Thanks. We are now moving to sanitary sewer and that's page 67. So we're starting with our private property I and I. This is the money when we give it to MST and then we do projects back. So right now, our first project is going on, just to kind of give an update. Um, it's on the west side of Little Meskigo Lake. So we can give you a little update, just kind of let you know.
So right now it's, yeah, it's on west side by Lurine, everything down and into the lake. Um, I was out there by the guys today, I think they're up to 10 lateral replacements that they have completed. Um, no major issues. Some owners, you know, restoration's the biggest thing right now that I'm getting calls for. Um, besides that, it's, it's, they got two crews starting now. So hopefully this week it'll go a little faster, it's supposed to be done by the end of this month. It's just not going to happen. They get about one lateral done a day, that's all they can do per crew. We had a rain day, of course, so they got put behind already. Um, I don't know how they're going to get it done, but they're going to get it done. And then the next one is Shubring area on the east side of the lake, that whole basin. I believe there's 60 homes. Um, we're going to try to get that whole basin done, so.
The whole base circling it?
So Meskigo Drive, it starts, that whole basin kind of filters through and it comes into Shubring Lift Station. And then everything pumps off from there. All Lake Drive, Pleasant View, kind of that area.
Lake Drive on this side of the bay?
Lake Drive off of Landon.
Okay.
So that second phase, just to let you know, we're going to start doing public information meetings, maybe in the fall, a, a construction schedule of possibility in 2024. We had anywhere between 1.8 to 2 million dollars that we have to spend, that MST said that we had to spend in the next two years. So you have agreed to the work plan for the one that's going on and you agreed to the work plan that is going to be for next year, just to let you know. This money is going to keep coming, so Tim and I are looking for our third area to start doing investigation and looking at where we have other ideas of I and I for private property. So this is private property I and I. It's basically replacing the sanitary lateral for the private homeowner as close to the house or all the way into the house to our connection point at the ma, at the right of way or main.
At the. Uh, where it transitions from six to four. So your lateral, four inch lateral goes all the way out to the main and it goes to six. So that's where the problem is a lot, where we get a lot of I and I coming in.
Does it have to be a replacement or can it be a new installation?
Replacement is full.
I'm saying like, what if somebody wanted to add water? Could you like, could you, can, I know we talked about this.
This is, this is sanitary sewer lateral.
Oh, got it.
This is just sanitary sewer laterals.
Exit, not entry.
Got it, yeah.
Yep.
You don't want that in your house?
Yeah, and why we do it for I and I, just for everyone, the policy is, MST has determined as I and. M S D has determined as I and I gets into the pipes, it gets into our lift stations, our lift stations then shoot the storm water down M S D. If they get too much storm water, then they have to dump, so.
Yep. Got it. This is by twenty-twenty-three? Does this mean it had to be scheduled by twenty-twenty-three? Cause we're.
Yeah, no, we worked with them and that's why we have those two work plans already done. So we got the one point eight to two million dollars. We are good. We, we got it, everything's scheduled, just to let you know, so.
Great, continuing.
Next page, again sixty-eight. This is where we talk about the sewer, the trucks, we split, um, the twenty-three, the fifty, the crane truck twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-three. Nothing's changed. Moving on, um, lift station upgrades. This is where we do some, um, upgrades to our lift station. In twenty-twenty-four, we have, um, we're looking to do both, we're looking to do woods lift stations, just the roof replacement, the scrubber for McShane there, uh, twenty-twenty-five, the McShane H V A C, twenty-twenty-six, the woods, um, H V A C, and then twenty-twenty-seven, the Jensen lift station. These are our sanitary sewer lift stations. One other lift station that we gotta talk about is our McShane lift station is our big one. That's the one where it has by our storage tank there. So there's a vault and we had some work done recently in the vault area. And they said that we have to look at our concrete in the vault of that area. So we need to do a little investigation and see what's happening with our concrete in the vault area. So we're gonna do some, gonna do some investigation rather quickly within maybe this year or next year. And then we were gonna get another price on here for capital. But I want to let you know that this is something that just kind of occurred to us and we gotta let, based off of, um, what were they putting in?
So Sable is a big company out of Final Act. They did a lake lower lift station pumps in the McShane and there's pipings were, was corroding. They came in, they dove the pit and then all the hydrogen sulfide just deteriorates the concrete. So it's starting to really deteriorate and this is our main lift station, like seventy-five percent of the city flow, flows into this lift station. So it's, it's pretty major. If this thing would go down, we would be flooding a lot of people. So they just recommended that they look at it, give us, it, we have to shut the whole station down, but have bypass pumps. It's a big operation to get this, this done. And then they come in and they recoat it, like they redo a manhole. When you redo a manhole, but it's the same thing, it's just, it's just a bigger vault. Um, but a lot of flow comes into the station, so it's something that just kind of came up, uh, before we were talking about capital.
How, so how long did you think they would do that work? How long are you down?
How long before it takes them to get done?
No, when they started, I mean, how long are we, cause you gotta bypass, right?
So I'm thinking probably at least a week and a half to two weeks to bypass into our station. Our station will still be functional, but we gotta take pumps and pump it. That has to be totally dry before I'm gonna recoat everything.
It's a little bit of crossing fingers while that happens, isn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, should we do this sooner rather than later?
We, we, we first have to go and see how bad it is and investigate it. Like again, they were putting something in there, they said, hey, you should look at this. We're letting you know, we're gonna look at this pretty quick and it might come up quicker than, than we expect. But I'm giving you a fair warning now. We didn't, when we were planning for capital, it didn't really pop up until just recently. I couldn't get it on the capital, I don't even have a cost for it, we don't even know how bad it is. I'm letting you know that it possibly could come up rather quickly here, so. Try not to surprise anyone here, I guess. Um, again, looking on page seventy, this is just the Mercury building for their cost for the concrete work of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then that's it, that's all we have for sanitary sewer utility.
Questions, comments? Okay, next. D P W.
We are moving on to D P W now. I don't get you, uh, page, uh, page forty-nine. So first, we're talking to, about our truck replacements. Um, these are common ones that we do every year. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, we're looking for to replace a one ton pickup with dump bed and plow. Um, that would be about eighty thousand dollars. Moving on to page fifty, um, this is our small equipment tools. We just budgeted about five thousand dollars a year. We've been doing this for the last couple of years just for miscellaneous small equipment. Page fifty-one, so this is our plow truck. This used to be in operating. We used to make this request on a yearly basis. Um, it was pulled from us probably the last three or five years out of the five. So what we decided to do and talk with the mayor is let's move it to the capital. We're only gonna request it now every other year. We don't need to request it every year. I think we can make buy with, um, every year, uh, every other year instead of every year. And this cost would then be two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is a, the truck, the plow, all electronics, everything that we need for it. So now this price has gone up, I think, what was it last year, about?
I think it was about two fifty-four, two fifty-five. Um, looking back to when I took over for Wayne, I think the first truck I did in seventeen, it was a hundred eighty-nine. And with this, and it's, it's coming, it's with everything, so it's not just one manufacturer or the other. A lot of it is, um, our electronics, which is, I don't want to call them basic, but we don't do pre-wet, we don't do any of that stuff. We, we do maintain our trucks, I think, better than any municipality. I have trucks that when people tour our shop, they can't believe they're sixteen to fifteen to seventeen years old. We wash them every time. It's just looking at what's coming forward, I think in two thousand and twenty-eight, if it holds that way, there's gonna be a whole nother rounds of, uh, whole nother round of diesel emissions. And with that is gonna come more restrictions and with that, it's going to be more of a headache. And these trucks to where I could get them built in about nine months, uh, which we're experiencing with the one, uh, coming up for twenty-four, it's actually a twenty-two truck or a twenty-three truck. It's taken about a year and a half to get them. And that's just the man, the electronics. I am switching companies. Um, right now, if we were to go down, our parts come from overseas. There is a company, uh, in Cottage Grove, just outside of Madison. Family ran company that came up with their own version of it. Uh, we went and used them, they've been around forever. So as far as turnaround, us breaking down, I'm not getting rid of every truck, any trucks. I used to rotate them. The ones we currently have are all functional. I do have two backups. When I say backups, just for plowing, it's not that two are just sitting around all year long. Uh, we use everything every day. It's just, when it comes to plowing, uh, this is kind of the avenue we have to go to service the city.
Now, the other thing too is we always try to look at how much we spend every year on the budget. So remember now, every other year, it's going to be about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars more than what we did previously. You know, just based off the fact that we were averaging, I think, around five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars on a yearly budget for D P W. Just every other year, we are going to spend a little bit more based off the fact of this new capital item that we didn't have before, so.
How many plow trucks do we have out on a?
There's thirteen routes in the city, so we have thirteen of our patrol trucks out. Um, I have seventeen guys plowing, so the other ones are taking care of our, um, public buildings and I have a mechanic in there. So when we go out besides myself and I have gone out, it's everybody.
So it's seventeen trucks?
Seventeen trucks, total thirteen on our roads, yep.
How long does a truck last?
Um, the oldest one right now that we have in a fleet is a two thousand and five.
That's too much math, twenty years is what you would expect?
Yeah, we'll go with that, yeah. And a lot of municipalities, they have like a ten to thirteen year turnaround.
So every other year is not gonna, you're gonna run out, right? I mean, if we're doing math.
Well, I'm not dumping them currently. Like, I did kind of weed out, I'll call them our problem childs with the trucks. But right now, we know what can go out every day, what can't. And, you know, something goes down during a storm, I have a truck that's very capable to fill in.
I, I'm just saying, I don't think every other, at some point, we're gonna have to buy a truck every year.
We are, I, we'll have to get back to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the point is, you've got, on every other year, twenty-twenty-eight, you, you're gonna wanna avoid twenty-twenty-eight, might wanna move that up. Those emission changes are substantial?
We are, and I'm actually working with, um, two of the suppliers right now to see what we can do to, you know, maybe you might see, uh, um, a current truck upgrade instead of buying another one, just to avoid all that emission stuff that's coming our way. And again, that could get pushed out to thirty, but as of right now, just a truck goes down, um, and we have a problem with the death fluid, which is happening with everything right now, or freezing up or gelling up. That's not something that just happens. You know, I can't just pull in the shop, fix it and go out, that truck's down for a couple of days. So that's what we're trying to avoid, but you might see something different next year when we bring it to capital.
Moving on, uh, page fifty-two, um, it's time for our mini excavator to be replaced. Um, how old is our current one that we got?
Uh, it is, uh, two thousand and eleven. Um, it, it's a everyday use. It's something that helps us get into our smaller areas, easements that we own. Uh, we replaced our rubber tire excavator last year, the Labir. This is something that is, uh, it, it's another tool in the pouch that we can use to service.
Can that be moved a year, given the, given the other costs, given the plow truck cost?
If I had to.
We did, um, please be aware, we did move, was it the salt shed?
Yeah.
We did move the salt shed, it was supposed to be this year and we moved it out because.
How much was that, Scott?
Three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, 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 if you look at it, our last capital is in twenty-twenty-four and we knew that this item was coming. So we're not gonna fix something or ask for money if that doesn't need to be fixed. So we, we slid that salt shed, I think, all the way to the.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Yep.
Yep.
So.
One, one concern is I don't want to push too much to twenty-twenty-five, cause the capital budget for the fire department's rather large that year. So whatever we're pushing there just makes it, it's gonna be a problem, so.
Just a thought.
And aren't the, wouldn't, doesn't the price of this stuff go up too more?
It, it always, everything goes up. Nothing tends, I haven't found anything that tends to go down.
Yeah.
Um, moving on, page fifty-three, that's just our asphalt, concrete work, um, in front of our, the Mercury building for forty-five thousand. Um, page fifty-four, we found out that we need another jetter steamer, um, that's used to free up clogs in culvert pipes, um, sanitary lines. And we also used it as a steamer. We used it several times in March when we had that frozen kind of ice storm to free up a lot of inlets so that people could, uh, get their, or storm waters being drained. Um, they would allow us to have two of them going, right, correct?
Two of them, and then this is also, um, our brigger equipment that can't fit in our shop to clean it. This is something we can use outside and keep everything clean to prolong its life.
And then on page fifty-five, our portable message board sign. Um, recently, we've been using it a lot. When you see it out there, we want one, we've been renting one for the light poles, correct? When you see it on the, on the side?
Yeah, any work we do right now in Jeansville, um, turns into us getting a hold of dispatch and sending somebody out with the P D. It's also something we can use for road closures. Um, right now to rent one, it, it's just kind of getting ridiculous. It's nice to have at our disposal, all the flags, banners, snowflakes, lights, um, anything that we can use to, right now, all we have is an arrowboard. And if I need another one, I go and use another municipalities and it's really not adequate.
And that's all we have for twenty-twenty-four, but if you look at page fifty-six, that's the one Alderman Kabake talked about. We pushed the, the salt shed rough, um, out to twenty-twenty-six.
Great, thank you.
So. And moving on, we're gonna do, then flip to plan division and conservation. And that would be, um, we can start with actually building division two, so that's page forty-two. Let's just start with that one.
I'm good.
So this is the one Alderman Kabake was talking about. So the newest branch of the armed force is the Space Force. And it was brought to our attention that we need a new pole for this.
Scratch that.
Who brought that to your attention?
I, I would fully support holding this off at least for four or five years, make sure that the branch of the military isn't absorbed into the air force at some point.
So. Um, so yeah, I'm, that's page forty-two. Um, we'll hold that off or just eliminate it. Um, page forty-three, barn doors replacement. Um, this was a request by the historical society, um, to split the cost for the barn doors to be, be replaced out there. Any comments, anything? Okay, moving on. Um, page forty-four, electric sign replacement at the library. This is in twenty-twenty-five, it's not in twenty-twenty-four. Um, again, Alderman Kabake brought it up, so that's why I'm kind of just going over it right now. Thoughts, anything?
Talk about it next year?
I think you keep it there for now and we'll talk about it next year and maybe in the meantime, we can come up with other, other solutions.
What's wrong with the current sign?
It's, well, Barb can probably talk about, but the software is, it's.
The software is getting older and the last, um, upgrade or, or when it broke, yielded to the radios, the only one that, um, Microsoft seven, Windows seven. So it's really old and it's radio technology, so it's, it's.
Moving on, uh, page forty-five, um, there's the light pole painting. Um, that's to wrap it up. I don't know if anyone has noticed what's happened for this year. Um, it looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Whatever happened with that, where they were trying to get us to get them all through?
So currently we're to Lanin, which we planned on, Racine and Lanin. Working with a powder coater, he's right out of Big Bend. I have him, you know, the clam shells that go around the bottom to catch up. Until that's done, um, I guess we were in a groove at one point. He wanted to do everything, all the way to Moreland this year. We pay him what we have in the budget now. January one, we make up that difference. He just wanted to get them done another way. He's taken on a lot of bigger accounts and, you know, we also have leave collection coming up, so I have to talk to him about that. But right now, that is our plan to do, Racine all the way to Moreland.
There is one other item on here, but it wasn't here, but last year, there was a, you guys passed it. It was in twenty-five thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars this year. It's the city banners out there. We're on the entranceway, we have four entranceways to the city, we have all the groups.
I know, it's already pulled.
Is it already pulled?
Yeah, we're not doing it.
Okay, so that is completely pulled, just to let it.
Strong objection to it right now.
No.
I don't want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on it.
It, it's total fifty thousand, twenty-five for this year and, or twenty-five in this year and twenty-five in the next year, so. And then moving on, I want to do conservation, planning division and conservation. Let me get you the page for that one. Conservation.
You one?
Seventy, seventy-two, seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Yes, seventy-one, five-year capital plan for conservation. So we're just doing a little bit better job of planning like the five years out for our conservation. In twenty-twenty-four, um, basically purchasing, installing signage throughout the various conservation areas in all the city. Um, they need to be an upgrade. They also need an enclosed conservation trailer. In twenty-twenty-five, he needs a boat motor and a, a new trailer for that one. And in twenty-twenty-seven, he needs a four-foot brush more. So it's, one, we have one item and then two, we kind of looked out for the next five years to kind of give you guys an idea of, of what we're spending, so.
Um, I've got a question on that, so like the four-foot brush more and stuff like that, there's obviously work being done on. on, you know, our conservation sites. Is Tom doing that or?
Some we, we have contracted services and some we do ourselves.
So when we do ourselves, is it Tom doing it or is it Public Works going out there and doing it or a combination?
Combination of helping out.
Okay. Just trying to keep an eye for the future for, as that position.
Yeah, right now, Tom has himself and his new conservation intern is Sadie that helps out. So.
What type of signs are these for 15,000?
It's everything from, again, we just threw a number in there. We're looking maybe probably just eagle, just to do the like, or similar ones like the metal ones of wayfinding, maybe there's a map at the beginning of it. Again, if we look to do stuff like the recycled material that lasts forever, then we don't have to maintain it. But that would be every one of our conservation areas. And just like, you know, the person, everything from a person like looking at, hey, this is where I walk, maybe a point of interest. So think of every sign that you can think of in a conservation area to be done.
So I apologize, I missed this one when I was going through. Our plan, our, our solution that we're looking at for Public Works for our signs of possibly in-house or partnering with another community to do an in-house sign.
We could use this as, this would be in a way of doing this. So.
So a very good chance it doesn't go out of capital or does, it's going to be substantially less.
Correct.
That seems like a lot of money for.
It wouldn't be if you were actually outsourcing it to him. I mean, the amount of signs that you could get to that, but we're looking at doing an in-house sign shop either internally or.
Do we have any signs there now?
Yeah.
In those places?
Yeah.
We haven't updated a lot. This is a one-time thing and we're hoping it'll last for another 20-plus years. So.
Do they need to be updated?
Well, some have bad signs and we don't have like walking paths where people want to do it. It always is a nice thing to have when people walk where we don't have maps, you know, that people can kind of follow along the trail. Again, what the mayor was talking about is, so Ryan and I went over to City New Berlin. City New Berlin makes their own signs. We get our signs from like Tapco or whatever. If we would contract with them, we could get a lot of signs for a lot cheaper budget than we are. And then hopefully, we are trying to use some of our innovation funds that's out there for shared revenue. And that would be a way that maybe like both us and New Berlin, using a shared revenue kind of of innovation of, hey, you guys are using and sharing stuff between the municipality. So.
One of the things that was in the budget that got passed, in addition to more shared revenue, is there is a $300 million fund for communities to try to do, they call it innovation. So either communities partnering with another community to provide a service or with a nonprofit or a private entity. And if you can show at least a 10% savings over doing it the way you have been doing it or demonstrate at least a 10% savings, the state will pick up, I think it's 30 or 25 or 30% of the cost for three years of that department. So it's, we're trying to, statewide, all of, all the communities are trying to find ways of actually tapping into that $300 million because it's not as easy as it sounds, trying to find something and then have a savings, a 10% savings in it. But this is one area where we might be able to do it.
It's pretty slick. Ryan and I went over to New Berlin. There's definitely cost savings by doing this. Right now, when we get our signs, we go through Tapco. Sometimes they take six weeks to get stuff. They can get stuff way quicker, way cheaper than us. We just buy like the standard just stainless steel. They can type it in there. They have software programs and they just cut it out and print it out to us. So again, it's pretty cool. And the fact is, we can get signs probably definitely cheaper and quicker than we would do with Tapco. So.
Now, do we have a conservation trailer now?
I do not believe we do. Ryan, do you know by chance?
We do not, but this will also help out like Adam, Tom, when they do the kayaks. Right now, they come and they, they do multiple trips for the kayak outings. We can store everything. It's not sitting outside. It'll be used not only from getting to and from, but it'll keep stuff new. Right now, in the winter time, we jam everything in idle aisle in the garage or it comes by me. Some stuff gets damaged this way. It will be used during, I can utilize it for some stuff. Tammy and Adam can utilize it and so can Tom.
Okay.
Also, the bolt motor in the trailer, we use the bolt motor to remove bogs all the time. It's not Tom. Usually Tom is there on the team and we have three or four DPW or sometimes utility guys help out as well. And then moving on to the last thing is we have, what did I, engineering, page 46. So all of the two items, page 46 and 47. 46 is the Hillendale Drive. We're using ARP funds to perform the water main work that's in the road. Remember from Sunny Hill to Field Drive? This is, again, we don't, we think this number is being a little conservative, but this is some of the funds that also will need to finish up and redo Hillendale Road there. So, and fix that field intersection.
Did, what was our gross on the ARPA funds? 2.6?
2.6.
And the other 600,000?
Test Corners Bridge.
Okay.
Remember that culvert pipe that's failing?
Yep.
Water main extension to.
Okay.
No, water, just, nope. Nope, we pulled, we pulled it all.
We switched it back.
We didn't use the water main extension for any of the ARP funds, did we? No.
We had talked about it at one point.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And then your question about page 47 with the road program. This is where, if you want to follow Alderman Kabaki's idea of adding more for the road program in 2024, this would be the place to do it. When we requested it back in 2023, we said every three years that we would do the extra million dollars.
Is Kevin awake down there? Just checking. I mean, what was the number we were thinking of adding in here?
Five for each year.
Okay.
So you're making.
Pencil that in, so to speak.
Yeah. Could we verify once we're complete with the capital? And let me do an analysis on how much landfill money we have before we commit to more road program? Just.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because right now, we're running very tight.
We're not approving the capital budget until we approve the capital budget. But I think for purposes tonight, I think at least you can throw some number in there and then we can adjust it.
Okay. I can have it by the next meeting to say, you know, 500, 300,000. It's, but go ahead. It's fine. Just throwing it out.
You got our numbers of stuff taken away, right?
The goal is to add something in there.
Yep.
All right. Completes.
Unless anyone has any other things that they see that they want to add or change.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else for capital budget funds, projects that you want to talk about? Otherwise, we will continue this discussion at the next call.
Okay.
Communications and miscellaneous business, hearing none, a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole would be in order.